If you keep spending.
I don't know which block you would be official for, Bafflin, Bafflin, she's what's her name? On the front of that's a good idea.
A little class to go to.
It is another.
Yeah.
And are you leaving? We'll call this session as ordered. You ready?
Yep. Okay, commissioners, this study session gets opened up as we wrap up our budget conversation. So staff turned to liberty of moving the parks master plan conversation and animal shelter funding to today's date. And some of this is really going to be review of documents that you've already received and things we talked about in the parks tour, but I'd like to run that by the entire city commission and get some consensus so that parks can begin working on the priority projects as we all agree. So you may recall that as part of the documents that we provided you, we took the park master plan and tried to identify categories within the park master plan that were called out and tried to create a matrix or a weighted scoring system. So you've received a copy of this, it hasn't changed, but the identified metrics were the whether promotes economic development, whether maintains quality of life, and this is to be applied to 187 approaching 200 individual recommended park improvements that are in the park master plan document itself. To try to sort out that large quantity of suggested improvements and put some type of priority to it. So categories were promoting economic development, maintaining quality of life, increasing asset management, basically getting on top of our maintenance, improving fiscal stewardship in terms of our finances, the ease of implementation, trying to identify what might be low hanging fruit or things that are easy to tackle, urgency to complete, whether that's because of safety concerns or other urgency reasons that make it urgent, low cost to implement, again, on the basis that if we have a big ticket item and we're trying to fund that out of our annual budget, we may wait a longer time and not be able to show results. Minimal impact on future budgets, not just at initial expense, but are we, is it something that would create additional ongoing expense? And then out of the master plan came measures of the intensity of use at different parks, the level of quality, kind of rated the existing parks in their current condition, whether they're low quality or high quality. The park district, as you know, we divide the community into districts and there was a recognition of kind of the importance of those districts based on population and usage. And then is it an important unmet community need? And so if you look at the numbers in parentheses off to the side, that reflects the weighting that we actually, I have tried to assign to it and that we used as the criteria that then helped create the ranking. So this document's a PDF, it can't necessarily be changed in real time, but we offered it to you quite some time ago saying if you had any feedback, we could change those weightings and that would make a corresponding change to the weighting of individual projects within the park master plan. So there's another document that I can show you in a little bit, but so when we had, I had this priority weighting system identified, we had the input from the park master plan, then parks director and deputy parks director and division heads and park staff went through every one of those 187 items and weighted them across all these criteria to come up with an open weighting of every one of those projects. So I'll stop there to answer questions that you might have just about the scoring system we built.
Could you just scroll down to the bottom again where the unmet community needs? And that was, that was a five on the entire scale, correct?
Mm-hmm. Well, it's a weight of five.
Weight of five, right.
Yeah, so there's others that are also weighted five and there's others who are weighted higher than that. But I think my thinking was trying to identify facilities that we have before we take on additional facilities.
Right, and I think I asked about this in an earlier email, so apologies if you're having to give it to me again, but that's, that's the part of the matrix that weights the responses that we got from the community surveys in terms of the types of facilities that people wanted us to invest in that they were looking to use. Or there was, there was not.
Well, you get it in multiple areas.
Okay.
Intensity of use is a reflection of kind of user patterns that were reflected in the park master plan. But yes, I think the unmet community need, the questions in the park master plan were what would you like to see, how would you be of an initiative? I think that's going to be found here.
Okay, okay, so those are more, that category's more here towards new initiatives?
Right.
Okay.
And so then if we jump to... We have to go onto the spreadsheet. Oh, well. It's just one page down. Okay, so then if I go into the spreadsheet, I'm going to kind of see the nuts and bolts behind the scenes, but there was an input that was created for every, every item in master plan and description and the rating of the condition and each one of those criteria we just talked about. And so as I mentioned, park staff were tasked with implementing those and ranking them. And then that ultimately produced a ranking list that you previously received and is part of this packet. And so I think what you're going to see is what I would refer to as back to basics in terms of what can come out on top. So you have projects ranked across the entire park system, you can read the first document. So it's, it's items one through 187, and then you also have them ranked by park. So the intention there was as we did the park tour and we went into a park, wanted to have for you, you know, itemized by park, what were the highest priorities within the park. And so again, Chris in the Parks Department has an annual allocation of $500,000 for improvements, kind of in response to these items, and we have not initiated funding this budget, wanting to get this prioritization done. So you're going to see that a priority, and I'm showing you on the diagram here in a different way in the packet, but the number one priority that came out of that, that ranking system was replacing wood structures, supports and shelters, replacing shingles and replacing what I wonder what was in, I guess to my point, that's very much back to basics. I think if we did that system wide, that would be no school in terms of touching them off, being painted and painting and that type of thing. And so if you just work your way down the list, the next item is replacing all plumbing. I don't know that it's a total that came replaced, but it is, and the identification of plumbing issues throughout the park system. There's something I want to put on the screen, this document.
That would be with one thing, the project, to include the project cost. And then you just, if you put it as the, if you put it as the Excel document, you can go back in and the top thing and change the ratings of it. So if you go to CIP code, you can change it however you want to read.
Okay, thank you. Might get there later. And this is, this is going to break it out by park for a maybe user error.
Go back over to rank and then sort smallest to largest.
So that would match about three pages of your document. But my intention isn't necessarily to read you every line item in every project, but I do want to take the opportunity to give you whatever information you might like by park or overall and kind of explain this rationale. But my, my thinking is, you know, in the past, we've had conversations project by project, it doesn't have merit and struggled to figure out how to interrelate it among other spending priorities. We're trying to, as I indicated when we first met with you in study session, we're trying to build a roadmap that serves as the prioritization and ranking to have some consensus and get started.
So I mean, just in terms of looking at that, I mean, would we look at maybe funding through number six if we were to get lucky on bids? Or would we look at funding, say, items one through five and then picking a couple of smaller items out from the next to get up to that $500,000?
I think some of these things are pretty easy to, easier to get started on than others. And so we could certainly get started on those. And then when we start talking about restroom replacement, staff's had conversations about alternatives, I mean, the project costs are initial impressions of what that cost might be, but we talked about, you know, is it full, in case of the Oakdale restrooms, are we able to retrofit them or do we, is it a full removal and replacement? They have a lot of value as a WPA structure. If we don't completely tear them down or replace them, then ADA can be applied without having to totally change the footprint of the building. So I guess my answer would be, I think some of the very first things we can get started on, and if we have consensus that we want to follow this priority list, then we can start really diving into some of these bigger projects and cost estimates.
Because right now, we still have 2019 budget to spend, is that correct?
Correct.
So if you took out like the Oakdale restrooms, you could do a number of items yet in 2019 and roll your Oakdale restrooms into 2020 because you're not going to do anything until 2020 anyway because of the staff reviewing it, getting bids, whatever you're going to do. So you could really take care of quite a few items down below that. I mean, that's just.
Given kind of this transition point, I think we would have to figure out what we're going to be easily get accomplished this year, but if I keep going back to whether this list is acceptable, if it is, then that's the starting point for staff to say, all right, we can get these done and within 2019 and priorities and fit them within budget and we can start planning accordingly going forward in future years. It's acceptable to me.
Yeah, I mean, I think anytime you're talking about ranking hundreds of needs, I mean, you need to do now. I mean, I think you for working to get a matrix set up. I mean, it's not going to be perfect now, but this is.
This is scary.
Absolutely it is, so yeah. I'm fine with it.
If you take out number six and number nine, how much of the rest of the list can you do?
Twenty, forty, ninety.
That's $850,000.
Seventy.
Because I mean, just eyeballing these figures. And the reason I'm asking that is, you know, there might be other sources of income for big ticket items. Like, you know, I could perfectly justify gasoline tax for the restrooms at Oakdale. Not only does it help us with our roadways, but it knows transportation, we want to improve connectivity, get people exercising. Sometimes the best thing to do is do something that doesn't involve not a lot of people like parks. And that may be the only source of the fund, but it's like to get 30 things done for the price of one, and all those 30s are making up our, you know, sustain the infrastructure because some of these things here look like they're going to just get worse and worse and worse. Anytime I see replaced deteriorated picnic table, the parks don't have to be fancy, but it's nice if they look nice. A park that looks nice, people will want to come.
You know, last week I joked that I've never had Jim Polwitz ask me to stop telling him to spend money and spending this amount of money and this amount of time, I would hazard a guess, may be a little bit of a challenge for park staff given that here we are in July. So rather than, and if I can get some consensus from you, I think staff can quickly then sit down and say, all right, given the timeline, given the priorities, we're going to, here's what we think we can knock off, here's what we think like need to be set back to next year for design reasons, bidding reasons, whatever the case may be, but we can still have a plan for you that recognizing the priorities, here's what we've accomplished this year, and here's how we come back next year. It may not be, you know, exactly one through eight, we may have to skip a couple and we may have to pull some in that are easy to administer and get this fiscal year, but we definitely concentrate on that prioritization on top of all that.
Right, I'm sure that you're going to probably take a look through these and say, okay, we want to do number, whatever, number four. Well, it makes sense to do number 34 at the same time as you're doing. I mean, you may get into a situation like that, I mean, I think we've got to have a little bit of flexibility, but by the same token, if you're starting on.
Right.
Number 130.
Yeah, our conversations in the past, we haven't had a number, but it feels like it's been number two and number 87 and.
Right.
In a sense of prioritizing.
You know, or are there other departments that can take on some of these other projects? Like diverting the water at East Crawford, that more suited for a public works project as opposed to parks and recs?
We definitely have Jerry Ivy in the initiative that Utilities is doing with addressing the blue green algae, and that'd be a good example, some departmental overlap. So yeah, we can, we can certainly look for that too.
That's not, I mean, it's a parks, a facility is in Parks and Recs territory, but the scope of the work that's being asked to be done is not a Parks and Recs, that's a street maintenance or bill, I don't know what, how you phrase it, but I mean, that's a hardcore construction project on a building that just happens to be under Parks and Recs. But I mean, if that was, you know, the police fire storage shit, you know, we had the same water problem, but I don't think it would come under, out of your budget.
We can certainly take all that into account and analyze the back projects. If anything deviates from the priority list, I would expect we'd be providing an explanation of why, and then if there's any opportunity for collaboration or.
What's the anticipated amount of time it would take to go through all this? Just from a collective brain trust in a row.
Entire list?
Yep. Well, we have a plan for replacing our water pipes, we have a plan for our streets.
Right.
This is fixed asset, ongoing maintenance for, you know, until the wood decays and you have to replace it.
Are we going to be able to make it?
What's the total of this whole thing? $23 million? Yeah. So and at the pace of $500,000 even, that's about 46 years.
And I mean, there's going to be some items then that come around that are going to need, that are going to become priorities.
They will take care of themselves because there'll be a pile of rubble on the ground. It's one way to shorten your list, I mean, waiting for a real long time and the building will fall down, but you don't have to fix it.
And I think, I think you're already aware of this, but this was an inventory, you know, holistic inventory of everything seen in every park. And that's why we're doing this prioritization exercise is to put some order to it.
I just have one quick question about the Jerry Ivy pond. The work that's going to be done as remediation for, or whatever, for EPA fine, that's just like an aeration system, right? It's not the recirculation system that I'm seeing here listed.
Nor is it repairing the walls.
Right, right. And we think we, does all that?
In fairness to Chris and his staff, I tasked him with giving your best guess on all these numbers, and so they are ballpark numbers at best. I mean, if you want.
No, but I'm just, there, we have lots of concerns with the Jerry Ivy pond, and not just from the fecal matter and the return system, the walls are beginning to crumble. It's not going to be an easy task or a cost efficient task to rebuild that pond. And so that's what we're struggling with is, okay, how much do we, how much do we really want to spend on fixing this pond? Not that we want to take the pond out, we just don't know at what rate or how much expense is going to be to fix it the right way so that A, we don't have the problem with the blue green algae, B, we have an efficient return system so there's good water clarity, C, we have lots of issues with people continuing to feed the animals out there even though we've asked people not to feed them, which contributes to the fecal problem in the pond. So we have a huge monumental task, this pond, we just need to figure out where you, the park board, the public, how they want us to address it, and then we'll address it, but it's not going to be cheap.
Or for just conversation reasons, has there ever been discussion about doing away with the pond? I mean, it appears, I guess you have to weigh, is it a liability or is it an asset to the community because of the amount of money we're spending on it versus what we're getting out of it?
We haven't really gotten into those, we haven't really gotten into discussions yet on, on taking it out and filling it in. Although we have lightly touched on it in internal conversations about the value, but we do know it's amenity for the community, we know people like to go to the gazebo and have their pictures taken.
But if you, if you cut it in half, you know, if you.
Make it smaller.
Smaller and still get the water.
Feature.
Feature and stuff like that, would that make sense to fill it in? You have less area you're going to have to maintain. I don't know if that causes more of a green algae because it's smaller.
Well, it'll be smaller, it'll be, it'll still be shallow, so as soon as it heats up and.
You get the same problem.
We'll have the same problem. So we just have to investigate really at what level the expectation is that we rehabilitate that pond. It's a wonderful feature, I, we all know it's an amenity, but we're right now, we're looking at the cost versus benefit. We just aren't there yet as far as what it's going to cost us to really rebuild that pond. We know that it was originally built by park staff. We are, we are of the opinion that we need to bring a professional in to look at it, just simply because of the amount of recirculation it's going to need and several other factors. And Rick and his staff have done an incredible job working on it, trying to figure out, we just aren't there yet, we're waiting on some more direction before we spend too much time and resources on it.
I bet if I dug into the numbers, you'd find that part of its high ranking is a result of how high traffic Jerry Ivy is.
Absolutely.
And, you know, I don't know that respondents to the park master plan were asked to rate particular improvements, but I think it's all premised on it's in a high traffic area and a high traffic park and it's amenity that needs, you know, attention versus do away with it.
Because I'm over there quite a bit, and you know, because there's no water flow, you know, you get to that north end and there's a lot of junk sitting in, I mean, it's almost, it's not very attractive to be around. And I guess mine is, is if we made it smaller and it was more manageable, could we have a better pond?
Yeah, either by pond design or circulation design. I mean, when I came in the community, my impression of Jerry Ivy was, talking about the pond in particular, is I was impressed by the amenity of the community putting that project together 15 years later, and it was dated when I got here, and it's 15 years later and it's not holding up at this point. But I think if Chris has come to me with projects, not necessarily Jerry Ivy Pond, but I've continued to put him off, if he'd said, well, let's start a design on Jerry Ivy Pond to answer the kind of questions you're answering, you're asking, what I was telling him is tell I know where it is in the priorities, I can't, I can't just start spending design money in a disorganized way.
Is there a, is the project that's being done through EPA?
Yeah.
Is that already scheduled?
Yes.
It's underway, do you have a timeline?
So it's actually being done?
We actually put the dollars in the budget for 29th, or 2020. This year, we're going to do a little public outreach and talk about some of the various same things Chris did, but most of the actual purchases are after the beginning of 2020. We have some work we can do before then.
Is it potentially cheaper to do all that work to Jerry Ivy at one time? Two times?
I'm not really sure. I mean, we need to get somebody in to, to look at Martha's end and then look from our end to, and then you know, Rick, Rick has a great idea to go in there and do the, what do you call it, Rick, the wetlands?
Yeah, floating wetlands.
Yeah, so.
That's in our EPA project, yes.
But as far as the recirculation, the other stuff, we, I mean, we just need to look at it all at once instead of piecing it together.
I think we may have a little bit of time to do that yet this year as Martha gets ready for 2020, but we'll just have to see how you can pull all that together.
If we didn't put anything, Rick and I worked together on the EPA project, did not put anything in that couldn't have been taken out and probably maintained, wouldn't be thrown away if you shut down and did, would that be correct, correct, Rick? We tried not to do anything specific.
Still having three, two or three departments working on the same physical square footage in town, one project, I mean, as far as the work getting done, the money's coming from different places.
If, if we can find efficiencies, we'll do our best to do that. And you know, up to, up to this point, I didn't know if Jerry Ivy was nine or 90. And I still need confirmation that, I'm hearing that that's a priority, so what we need to do is double time it in terms of looking at all these options and trying to be effective.
Well, it just seems like it kind of aligns with some of the other things. I mean, not only is that a heavy, heavily, the most heavily used park, if I'm not wrong, but it also speaks to the passive nature areas that people wanted and the walking, because it's got a nice walking path around there, so yeah.
I have a very simple litmus test. If I couldn't possibly imagine this city without it, that a party goes up. I don't think I would want to see Salina without that, that park.
So I'm repeating myself a little bit, but if you just make a quick pass through the top priorities, it's wood structures and paint and upgrading electric toll and plumbing and the overlook rail at Indian Rock and restroom refurbishment at Oakdale and safety mulch in the playgrounds, decking and wood slats and painting picnic shelters and I've referred to it previously as back to basics, but I think it's reflective of our deferred maintenance and at least we're lucky enough to have an annual allocation that we're trying to figure out, not where to, how to pay for it, but what to, what to start with.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how you can disagree very much with the items one through 10 or one through 15, I mean, you know.
I think the inventory is valuable, and I'd say just for the first year at least, we get as much done as possible and just remain flexible and open minded about both the Jerry Ivy and the Oakdale Park improvements. And I just probably set them, they're not, probably not going to get to those to 2020 anyway, so. I think we'll have an opportunity to look at it next year when they'll be a little closer to the top.
If I was going to move something down low, maybe number 21, I've been a lot of cities and nothing tells me that the city doesn't care about the park if the water fountain go over. That's just, that's a sad state of affairs. It's 100 degrees, you go into a water fountain and nothing comes out.
I would agree with that, sir.
I'd rather sit on an unpainted bench than not be able to get the water.
Oh, bathrooms and pond are on hold, you might get down to that one.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And we have replaced, we have repaired several of the water fountains that weren't working. We repaired the one in Lakewood, we repaired one at Pacific, so we're, we're getting to them as we can.
Part of this will be a function of whether it's done with internal staff or contracted out, schedule availability, our ability to do repairs versus things we need to contract out as well.
Assuming we're cheaper than contract out?
In some circumstances.
And when you talk about staff doing that internally, are we talking about like Parks and Recs staff that have that, that have the expertise?
If their seasonal duties will allow and their skill sets allow, yes.
Okay.
And that's kind of where I was going with that, whereas, you know, if we're, some of the stuff that we're working on means we're not doing other things that we need to, you know, what I call the bigger picture, so everybody sees the, the mowing and the cleaning the bathrooms and the playground mulch and all the other stuff that's used every, every day, we can work on some of this stuff, it just means that we'll just be taken away as part of our job, I mean, it's what we do, it just means that what we're focused on, we'll say, one of the restrooms, water fountains and sunset, that may be a two, three, four, all week, all week project, and some other things just won't be accomplished. So it may be in the best interest for us to contract that out altogether as opposed to staff doing it, just depending on what it costs and what else we have going on in the system. We've been trying to get the playground at East Crawford Recreation Area replaced all year, it's just now finally dry enough for us to work on it. So certain things are weather dependent as well.
At any point, do we need to have a discussion about our staffing levels and as we continue to add more and more responsibilities? I think that's kind of where I was going with that in terms of, I mean, I think that parks employees have a lot more expected of them than they probably did 20 years ago. And I feel like we're running probably. of them than they probably did 20 years ago. Um, and I feel like we're running probably as efficiently as we can. Do we ever get to a topic where we're like, you know, we just can't, we can't take on more?
We're having those conversations as well.
Or we can't, I mean...
That, yeah, that's a, a meaty topic that we've been having conversations about, both from, you know, kind of the ongoing maintenance, um, the, what's going to be represented as part of the downtown project. Um, we've been looking at staffing levels, as Chris mentioned, just in terms of dragging ball fields and, and dragging and lining ball fields, picking up trash with seasonal workers or when they're available versus when the, the ball, the schedule, um, picks up prior to school getting out, where we can fill those. So, somewhat independent of the Park Master Plan conversation, staff has been trying to do some staffing, um, analysis. The other one I would be remiss if I didn't mention is building maintenance. We've, we've kind of accepted building maintenance responsibility for our own buildings and those of other organizations, but we don't really have a dedicated staff who would need to do that.
So, with the plumbing in one of these parks, is it parks and rec, you have your own, I'm just going to use the term plumbers and whoever else has to work on that, or is there another department?
We have our, we have our, our, our Silvies Bains Division that helps with a lot of that. Like, we have our own in-house HVAC specialist and, and stuff like that. So, if it's something we can do, we do. But if it's something that's a little out of our, out of our skill set, we'll contract it out. So, if there's like a major water line replacement, we won't do that. We'll, we'll contract somebody to do that. That answer your question, sir?
Yeah, or there are other departments in our city government now that do that work?
Utilities does some water main work, but not like they would in parks. We, I don't know that we have those staffing resources available. It would be pretty much as Chris described.
So, you, so you can handle the small?
Small stuff, we have the, we have the ability to take care of, but some of like bigger things, like anything electrical, transformers, stuff like that, electrical panel work, we have to bring somebody in for that. We, we don't do that.
So, we're replacing broken commodes and stuff in park?
We can do that.
That you do?
Yes, sir.
So, if this is, is an acceptable roadmap, do you recognizing it, just timing-wise, dollar-wise, there'll be reasons that things get a little bit out of order, but if this is an acceptable roadmap, my initial would be to, I think you've already adopted the Park Master Plan, to bring this back as an endemn that a Park Master Plan would be adopted, and then that'll serve as a basis as we tackle parks projects in terms of budget priorities and, and project priorities. The assumption is we're staying on this, and if we're mediating from it, we're going to explain why.
And then I, I think it'd be good, once we get started on, on trying to meet these goals, is every, it may have to be every three months, every six months, we get updated as what's been completed and, and the cost also to see how close we were to follow through. And then we'll keep it in this order, but we'll, then we'll be able to see, you know, one, two, 12, 15, 18, because it made sense to do them.
And, you know, I agree with everything you just said, and there'll be times when something fails and it changes the priority as a result.
Because it has to be.
Right.
You know, one of the other things we talked about too, when we went on the Mark Park tour, are there any of these parks, and I know she had one highlighted there, that, I mean, does the city need every single one of these parks? We got parks out there, like we talked about, Lumpel, or Ben, I mean, yeah, I, I mean, you know, the, the only people I ever see use that was, you know, the, the guy that's living down in the, where the, where the river channel is down there. I mean, other than that, there's a lot of those parks. Are they being utilized?
That merits looking at as well. I know it got talked about a little bit in just part of the Park Master Plan, and as you noted, there's a couple of other examples where it talks about changing, yeah, the shilling park, changing the agreement. We've had conversations about, you know, in large expanses of mowing, um, do we have to mow it all or are we allowing the bringers and, and that, if I can, we'll go back and looking at the uses and try and be more efficient with our operations. So, anything to add, Chris?
Not specific. I mean, on, on shilling, I mean, we understand, I understand the reason why, um, Director Snyder brought that in several years ago. I understand, I understand why. Um, but the issue is, really is, shilling has a nicer playground than the park that we have there, and it's, it's a huge piece of property that we're mowing. Our agreement with the school district says that we will maintain that in the same condition or better as our other parks, so that's why we finished mowing. But it's a lot of wear and tear on the equipment, it's a lot of mowing, um, and we really haven't seen that many people using that park in the last several years. Most of the kids go over to the school itself and use their playground. So, um, you know, parts for that playground, that playground's, it's probably towards the end of its life expectancy. We try to get parts for it, and it's hard to get parts for it. So, we're at a point, do we, do we take the playground out altogether? Do we replace it? Do we, what do we do? So, it's all part of our discussions internally on what do we do with that park, but we spend a lot of manpower, a lot of gas, mowing, mowing an area that we really don't see any benefit from.
You know, some of the parks can be repurposed. I mean, sometimes you just need open space. You don't need, you just need sidewalk, some benches, a tree or two, uh, and it's a park. I mean, it's...
A place for kids to run around.
And the Park Master Plan pointed out a desire for passive uses.
And, and I would, and I would say that, you know, shilling is, you know, we don't own any property in that part of town, so I understand why we did, we did a partnership with the school for that property. It wasn't a bad idea at all. It was a great idea. But we have a lot of needs right now. We have some shortcomings, because we got a budget. So, do we keep mowing it? Do we replace the equipment, or do we find another option? We actually do own some property there, um, but it's more along the, the, kind of the drainage, the creek channel.
Do they have a playground that we're maintaining next to a playground?
Yes, sir.
See, that's where I think the, the silos have to come down a little bit. Some of those silos are going to be the school district, which is not us, but, I mean, it's, just imagine, you know, we're a visitor from out of town. They don't, visitor doesn't know who owns their property.
Correct.
And just see
Yes, sir.
Two playgrounds right next to each other.
Right, and I'm respectful, because I don't know. I would guess, you know, if, if you're being offered property for park ground, you generally think that's a good thing, that there's an opportunity for development somewhere around the future. But as we start looking at our finances and making priority decisions we're talking about, the, that changes the conversation.
Well, it depends on how high we rank past the spaces in park, you know, at parks or whether we want Solana to be
No, I just mean, the value of that open expansive ground. We, we haven't found a way to develop it in years.
Well, maybe, it may not need to be developed. It just
Possible. It's another conversation for another day, all this, but, but maybe that ground's swappable for something somewhere else, or you really wouldn't want to have anymore.
So, the other option.
Would it be possible, um, Mike, to have you resend? Um, I think you, I think you sent it in the past, the, I don't, I don't know if we've gotten it electronically or not, the Excel spreadsheet, the, the whole thing and
Sure.
And the, um, kind of the matrix.
We definitely can do that. Um, multitasked here a little bit, but, uh... And what, what Chris is talking about is the shilling park here, school district playground here, and then
But we mow all the way down, yeah, we mow all that, from that, that bottom line all the way to the property line.
So, that whole thing is considered the park?
And we actually, we weren't aware, when I first was hired, we weren't actually aware that, we were under the assumption, I mean, because there'd been another director before me, we were under the assumption that that was all actually park property, and then one day the school district just went in there and dropped in a backstop, and that's when we started doing some research and determined it actually wasn't city property.
But we agreed to maintain it.
But we agreed, but we agreed to maintain it.
So, is that the passive use we mean, getting away, getting, doing away with?
Well, we don't, we don't actually own any of it, but we take care of that, obviously the green box, but all the way to the east to the yellow line, we take care of, of just the, just, Mike, from the bottom, from the, the, from, basically from here over to here, we maintain all of that.
And above that?
And above it too, yes.
That other areas, the rectangles in the orange, you know, we mow that as what the city does.
Who owns to the north?
Uh, that's city property, I believe.
Yep. So, my point was, you know, you may not need to mow that legally, or if it's as high a frequency as, as other property that we maintain. If there's efficiencies to be gained or a different way to think about things, we're, we're starting to have those conversations. So, we have a whole other topic for you if you're ready to move on.
Um, I just have one final question. Um, I know that when we first received the Parks Master Plan, the action that we took was we just accepted it, we didn't formally adopt it. So, um, would that be something that when we're looking at adopting the, this, um, the ranking matrix or whatever, that we would be looking at adopt, formally adopting it at that point? Because, I mean, that, and I had asked about that at, at the time, that was before you were the manager, and, and Jason made it very clear that it was an acceptance only, not an adoption.
I mean, staff's had conversations since then of, do, do all of our plans coincide or do we have any conflicts? And I think part of the, the reason that we accepted plans in the past versus adopted them was just kind of acknowledging receipt of them without making an overly binding. So, I guess we need to go back and take a look at the other plans to make sure that there's no unintended consequence of formally adopting the Park Master Plan and finding ourselves in conflict with the comprehensive plan or some other document. But we've had, and we've had conversations about, as we plan, whether it's, you know, commercial development, residential development or otherwise, when, eh, eh, there is more importance to having formally adopted the plan and being able to rely on it than just any accepted plan. So, we're trying to sort that out as well.
Okay, that's something you take off, remove Jerry Ivy Pond, you can get down to the bottom of this page.
Might need 18 also.
If you're open to parks, you have another 60,000.
Practically speaking, I don't expect we're going to be able to get to Jerry Ivy Pond.
Well, not even this year, but whatever year it goes, that's the whole, that's the whole budget for that year.
Well, maybe even more than that.
Right, so I'm, I'm just thinking, maybe that could be part of a separate, larger, I mean, to take, it's been in how many years? 30, 40, 30?
Yeah, I think if that's what you consider is the, the condition that it's in, if we put it out too long, we'll
That's a lot of maintenance we're making up for at, at one time. But there's a whole lot of good stuff in the rest of this first page here, which I think folks who go to wherever their neighborhood park is are going to appreciate. I think Jerry Ivy, the whole park is, is, is city treasure, but that's just, we can get a whole lot done with, considering you have two or three projects on, I'd like to see that split out. I don't know where the money's coming from, but
I guess what I would suggest, if I could, is that staff give you a more detailed report about the condition of Jerry Ivy Pond and what that might look like. I mean, if you, in a little water time, you'll see the, the strap iron that's holding that wall together at the moment. And so, my biggest concern would be that we don't defer maintenance improvementally and pay the price for that. But we can, we can certainly provide you more detail, both in terms of what, what the, what the condition is, what project might be, what the cost estimate might be. This is very preliminary at this point. And then you help make the decision that you're
Maybe there's a goose and duck protective society in America who I mean, it's, because that single handle is going to be big. There's some stuff on the bottom of this page here. I don't think it's going to last too many more years. We're going to have real big expenses or we'll be closing parks because there'll just be no shape to build back up for these.
Well, hopefully we'll be coming back to you for further application, but trying to get our arms around a smaller subset that we need, when we, the Okay, it's all right. Um, we'll move on to animal shelter information.
Donation report and summary, 7/22/19.
Hey, yes.
Right, right there.
Okay, so, um, so this has been something that's been in the works since, in, last year. Scott Gary, who is Deputy Parks Director, and has since moved on, but he did a commendable amount of work trying to piece through multiple sources of information, tried to kind of pile the status of, of grants and donations at the animal shelter. And we knew that we had quite a bit, and there was concern about the record-keeping and the accuracy of all that. So, um, I won't read you the entire document, you have a copy and, but suffice it to say that he, he went through and inventoried our donations. He has some commentary on the Smedley Trust. If you recall, the Smedley Trust, that was a sizable contribution that we received, and the staff followed up with them about the possibility. It, it had some restrictions on it. Staff followed up on the possibility of using it for the surgical center, for Spain neutering, and, and the trustees felt that that was a terrific use of those funds. Another issue for us was donations that were made in honorary, in memory or honor, ranging from $5, thousands of dollars, um, and dedicated to an individual. And as I'm sure you're aware, we, we have a history of Petco grants and receiving those grants and, and the intended use of them and, and tracking those uses. So, uh, this report kind of summarizes the effort that went into gathering the information, provides a, a summary of all, all the donations and grants that were received and accounting that Scott went over with, with Chris and Debbie in the finance department and, um, worked on here, balancing to our books. And I guess the thing I should tell you is that there were, understand the way there was concern about how those donations are received and tracked and whether they just kind of roll into the general fund and get spent on, on things not related to the animal shelter. They are tracked separately, they're maintained in a separate fund, and so this is an accounting of that fund and, and the balance of that fund. Um, so, a little bit of discussion of the Smedley Trust, that was $141,000 contribution, and we, staff pursued, uh, the design of, of the surgical center, but has not initiated that project. We want to get through this conversation. Um, and the actual cost of the improvements are estimated at $30,000 to convert, for those that either went on the tour to convert the, what's currently a storage garage and surgical center. In memory and honorary donations, I'm going to jump to a different spreadsheet. Um, sorry. There we go. So, um, vendor in this instance is someone that, that contributed on behalf of someone. And so, intentionally blacked that out. We, we didn't have a system of confirming whether they wanted to be anonymous or not. This is, as a contributor, this is information that could be anonymous if we chose to, um, be, remain anonymous. But my point here is we now have an inventory of the date, and these are in order of the, the person in whose memory the contribution was made. But we now have a date of the contribution, uh, when we have the information, the, the person that made the contribution in memory of who, and we flag that as being dedicated for in memory and honor, and then the dollar amount. We show that as unrestricted. There's other instances where they, some of their contributions specific to cats or specific to dogs or specific to a particular item. Um, and so, some of you, I, I've been approached by individuals, and some of you have approached me about individuals that had contributions in, in memory, and all those instances, I've been able to find them, um, find the records in the inventory that Chris was able to put together. So, um, I was scrolling through it pretty fast, but, uh, I know Ferenc Rudig was a recipient or someone that was, I was seeing donations, and, and Merle Hodges was in there. And so, been able to confirm those contributions. Um, Monique, Holly, and Lisa Hall were here to, and, and we've had some conversations about some type of memorial wall. Um, if you're familiar with the, the tree, um, contributions and the splendour on the wall just down the hall from here, talked about something like that at the animal shelter. Haven't had a chance to talk recently, whether you've fleshed out any additional ideas, but Haven't had a chance to talk recently, whether you've fleshed out any additional ideas, but our thinking was that we now have the records pulled together and we can start to do something in honor of people who have had contributions made in their name. Anything you want to add in that regard?
I've just been doing a lot of research. I sent some photographs over to Chris today of a couple of things that I'd really like to look at. I've got Sign Pro coming out on the twenty-ninth, so we can actually, I can show them what wall I'm talking about and kind of show them some pictures of something that I have in my head and what they, if they can do it, if they can't, then I'm just going to keep looking to find somebody who can do that for us. They've done all the stenciling and all the vinyl work on the walls inside already, so we're just kind of maybe wanting to take that a step further and have them see what they can do as far as what I have in my head. I also want to look at the shop downtown that has all the trophies and has the metal work, things like that. I want to reach out to them and see, you know, what they would have to offer as well.
So, one of the other things that staff talked about was we really didn't have a good system in terms of receiving a donation and logging who it's from and the purpose. And so, this is still somewhat in draft form, and we've identified a couple of improvements we've made, but trying to gather enough information to find out whether it's a one-time donation, the shelter also has the opportunity for an ongoing donation, and trying to create some categories that you can contribute to. If you're, you can just provide a general contribution to the shelter, you can dedicate to dogs or cats or the spay or neuter program or the dog park. What we're trying to do is avoid small contributions for very specific purposes that we're, you know, just never accumulate enough funds to really accomplish the purpose, and it just creates a lot of record keeping. So, what we talked about is having some threshold amount, if someone either wanted to fully fund a project, or if they wanted to dedicate for some purpose other than what we predetermined, having some dollar amount that was significant enough to merit, to cause us to believe that we might eventually get enough funds for that purpose and to make it worth tracking. So, trying to formalize the donation process, and then also the tribute in memorial, record keeping, so that if it is in someone's name, we get enough information that we know that we can track that and log that better. I do know, speaking with Carl, that quite a few funerals, there'll be a request when we get some contribution in someone's honor, they will take into account as well. So, don't necessarily have to have a name attached to every contribution, some type of aggravated approach like that.
Are there in-kind kind of contributions, and how do you handle those?
There are.
Acceptance process, or it should be a process probably to refuse, is what I think.
Well, what I do know, just by way of what Chris was able to, or Chris, what Scott was able to find in his research, we received towels and cat litter and different items. I know Monique and Lisa can speak on a more daily basis what we received in our town.
Yes, we did. Something, I mean, there's a table that gets filled on a daily basis, but we then distribute between like whatever the shelter can use, and then also we donate a lot of it to the friends of the shelter, so that they can in turn then donate it to the public, like on their Sunday giveaways, their Sunday food giveaways, blankets, whatever they can give away to somebody who's in need for their pet.
People very rarely want to receive for this, donations. Never really issue in that respect.
So, by way of this spreadsheet slash database, there's a lot of information, and I just kind of sorted it out to get you this report. So, I don't know the number of contributions, but I would tell you it is sizable. Let's see, as I just scroll through, there's quite a few individual contributions and quite a few people that we want to make sure that we take into account and give them recognition. So, then, grant by grant, staff reviewed the different grants that were received, the purposes of those grants, and then the spending, I'm sorry, that corresponded with that stated purpose. So, we have grants dating back to 2015, and we balance those out in terms of forty-five thousand coming in and capital improvements and training going out. There's a couple of things in note with respect to those grants. One, we received a grant that's intended to be over multiple years, over kind of the middle of that process. Here's the one for the cat room upgrades as an example. Yeah, this one. So, the 2018 Petco grant was a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, split over three years, seventy-five thousand in 2018, fifty thousand in 2019, fifty thousand in 2020. So, we're still tracking those uses. There is a note that the application was intended to be used for capital improvements and maximize life savings, and there was some discussion about quite a bit of that was for spay and neutering. Chris and his staff have been able to confirm with, in the Petco documentation, that use of those funds for spay and neutering was an acceptable use, and so, we're balancing all that out as well. So, we have open grants that are part of that fund balance that we're maintaining and will continue to monitor and report, how we're spending that in lieu of the grant award in the first place. So, and then there's also a twenty-five hundred dollar grant from ASPCA, and as I mentioned, we have dedicated donations to cats and dogs specifically, as well as the dog park. And then, there were donations, the fallen case, the seizure of the horses and livestock generated some donations, and this is an accounting of basically the full expenses of that case being spent out of the donation fund. So, there may, Debbie and I talked about, there may have been additional costs in kind and otherwise that have occurred, but I believe this is actual housing and transporting.
There were some costs that were paid out of the operations of the city also, very minimal though.
So, maybe I'm going to put you on the spot, but fund balance at the moment?
The number that I looked at as of today was a little over five hundred thousand. It doesn't tie to that, because these numbers don't go quite as far as I did, but we did tie it out at this point. I don't remember what that methyl was in here. I'm sure you're right there. The cost of that page, Mike. Five hundred and seven thousand, almost five hundred and eight thousand. Today, it's about five hundred and sixteen thousand.
And this is a few months behind with Chris, or I keep saying Chris, but Scott, having prepared it and leaving. One of the things that's come up, a suggestion that's come up is restroom at the dog park. And if you're familiar with that location at all, there is a restroom there, but it's a long hike from the dog park, and it's an identified need that while we wouldn't get funded otherwise, so personally, I felt like that has some merit, and it has some added benefit just to, yeah, yeah, there are users that are really down at that end or using the power of field potentially, but it might get used by them as well. So, it's something that we've talked about, we wanted to get all this sorted out before we knew where we stood with the surgical center and the uses of the Petco grants and what we have in terms of unrestricted balance. But I think, now that we've got all this done, we can start to turn that path.
Do restrooms like Alvin, if we put one at the dog park, are those locked up at night or do those remain open twenty-four seven?
We can, I mean, something like that, we can get a prefabricated C X T unit that has timed locks on them, and they would lock themselves, and they have a panic, kind of like a panic button, so if you're already in there going to the bathroom and it shuts down, you can get out. It's like a magnetic lock, but we'd probably put something like that on there out there just so that when, it would stay secure at night.
I think that's the extent of what I had to report for you. Back to the donations, I've heard, you know, anecdotally that there were, Vanessa might have said, well, I might do this or that with a contribution. I don't know that we've found anything to that level of detail, but we, I think there's an opportunity, as Monique said, at the shelter, staffs began working on just kind of a recognition on our webpage for the animal shelter in the city and keeping that updated. And I do think there's an opportunity for some improvements, whether it's benches or trees, I guess if there's some way to recognize the entirety of, rather than try to isolate individuals, since we don't have very detailed records, that would be one detail.
There are other projects from the NACA report that we're going to tackle from those donations. You know, we talked about the surgery center, but for security purposes, NACA report also recommended that we rework in its entirety the front desk area, and so that's something that we're looking at right now. We don't have a final number, I mean, we have a plan, but we don't have, we're not ready to address it yet, but there's other things that we're looking at that we'll bring forth in the future for you to consider.
The use of these donations and grants do not have to come before the commission, correct?
I would say if it's over twenty thousand dollars, I'd probably want to bring it to you for your consideration.
You guys agree on some, it didn't have to come to support?
Yes, sir.
And spay and neutering is huge. There's a lot of support for that in terms of the donations. I think it makes a huge difference in our ability to be a local shelter, and I think it makes a huge difference in our ability to adopt. So, once we get the surgical center done, that's a huge improvement, but there's ongoing spay and neutering costs that these funds, we'll want to manage these funds with that in mind, I think, in addition to just capital type items. I think that's the extent of what I had for you today.
I have an unrelated question, so if somebody's got a question.
Any comments from the audience? That just sounds so denigrating, but from the, from the, from the city at large.
I presume, not knowing any better, that these donations, as they start here, as the balances start in 2015 or 2016. I remember at the time that the city took responsibility for the animal control function, which was a bit chaotic, to be honest with you. We did discover at some point that there was a fund, I believe, held at the community foundation that was donations. Has that been, is that incorporated into this now, or is that a separate thing that still exists? And I'm kind of...
The Greater Salina Community Foundation, they hold funds and they're, this is what I learned about them, they hold funds for people that have passed, and they pass those to our house, and they have.
And that is part of your general donations?
They are.
I couldn't remember what the range was.
And we do have those split out as...
So, you're saying they get distributions?
In fact, going through this data, that reminds me, there were individual, one was a shelter fund, another was a fund in someone's name, and there'll be distributions that show the vendor as a Salina community, a Salina community foundation.
I just didn't know if this was covered, then.
This may not be updated, but as moving forward, it's in there, yeah.
Yeah, and I think I blacked them out, because they made reference to names, and I didn't know if that was the donor or if that was a fund in their name established at the foundation.
Yeah. If I could go back and ask you about the rubric that you had set up for, the very first thing you went over. There were four items at the very beginning of that that you sort of set up and giving points to. Yeah, right, yeah, right at the very, very top, at the benefits metrics. Any consideration given to, as part of a metric that you'd want to look at, is participation rates?
And if they're part of the...
Yeah, participation rates, whatever the improvement is, is what are our participation rates, and is it something that we need to improve participation rates on? The second thing being, any consideration giving to accessibility to maybe different ethnic groups that may have different activities that may or may not have been part of the parks master plan. I can tell you from designing parks in New York City, we designed in several different neighborhoods, and there were a lot of different recreational sports activities that ranged from chess tables to boxy courts to handball walls to different things that maybe different neighborhoods may find more usable based on either age groups or ethnicities or whatever the case may be. And then the third thing is, is any rank to what was at the time in reference to the cost recovery model, which may be sort of participation rates, part B. Any reason why those can't or shouldn't be included in any sort of metrics that say these are what we find? Because when you read the parks master plan, there's a lot of that sprinkled in there, it's just not reflected in there.
Yeah, and we tried to use the master plan and what it provided as the source, rather than try to create something that was independent and stood alone from the master plan. So, intensity, with respect to participation rates, intensity of use, I think was where we were trying to go with that. Now, recognizing that that's intensive use of existing facilities, it's not speculation about if we added this, what the intensity of use of it, an entirely new feature might be. With respect to, you know, the ethnic age group type thing, I kind of relied on the master plan and come out of that process with suggestions about additional offerings, and so, by way of the hundred and some items that are in that list, I...
Oh, and I recognize you got a few more work to do.
I can't speak to how the consultants put that together, but my assumption was they're trying to...
Yeah, I recognize you've got a few more work to do. Just one last thought on that rubric is, anything that we might be able to do to include healthy outcomes?
Yeah, in all honesty, I'd have to go back and read the park master plan. I know there was some discussion of all that, I thought, is the metrics they developed as part of the park master plan, we're trying to take some of that into account.
Well, it may be some way that we can actually measure. A metric that we can actually measure is that, do you have a health park that says assessments?
Yeah.
It wasn't Salina regional, they put out a healthy community study every few years, I think maybe the last one was through 2016. So, I think they're, for some reason, I thought that they were getting ready to do it for, for one of those.
Now, the state does...
Is it state?
Health, the hospital, the hospital's foundation, too. Hospital contributes information to that, but normally I know if the state is the actual author.
Okay.
And there may be another one, because now I'm thinking about what you said, it might be a distant memory or something.
They do a priority listing of mental health and physical health, and they rank order their greatest concerns as priority for their intention.
Do we, how are we assessing the use of each park? Just gut feeling, walking around?
We don't, we don't have a clicker, we don't actually track. I mean, the best that we could do is pull something together based off of our, I mean, we only have a handful of picnic shelters that we actually reserve, because the rest of them don't have electricity or anything, where that's just first come, first served. But if we really had to track it, I would say the most, we could go back and look at our picnic shelter reservations, or tennis court reservations, or something along that nature, but other than that, we don't really have a way to track the use of each park. I mean, we do have gut feelings, we know how popular Jerry Ivey is and Burke, and I mean, those things we just know, because we see the people there all the time, but we don't, we don't count them.
And we know the organized activities, basketball, softball, soccer.
And, you know, back to John's comment about the cost recovery model, you know, the cost recovery model, we apply, you know, like the bottom tier of our pyramid is parks, and it's presumed that taxpayer dollars fund a lot of those improvements, and so, some of that stuff, you know, we just do it because it's for the community. But things like, if we go to rebuild tennis courts, for example, we may look at a different model for those to help us at least with the maintenance of those. So, some of the things that he's talking about do have merit, we just haven't really gotten there on some of them yet.
And speaking of the cost recovery model, I had sent a question to Mike earlier today, and I don't know that he's had a chance to pass it on.
I have passed it on, I don't know how it went.
No, my question was that, it got passed, well, at least as far as, no. In terms of, when I was looking back through some of the materials that we've gotten, I think it was last week, about like the cost recovery models and stuff, and I saw that like the Field House had like a sixty-five percent cost recovery model, and I was just wondering, like, do you have a sense of the ballpark figure that the operating subsidy is? And I was just wondering, like, do you have a sense of the ballpark figure that the operating subsidy is every year? Because, I mean, I understand the sixty-five percent cost recovery model, but it's like sixty-five percent what, or fifty-eight percent?
Travis, do you want it?
He's right behind you.
Travis, did you bring your, some of your numbers?
I did. I do have some hard numbers for two thousand and eighteen, and then where we're at as far as June of nineteen.
Okay.
And so, as of two thousand and eighteen, for the Field House only, um, the revenue and, or the cost recovery was fifty-eight percent.
Right.
A hundred and twenty-three thousand and change of, of revenue and two hundred and eleven thousand and change for, uh, expenses. And then as of, as of the end of June, we are, uh, the Field House is at ninety-six thousand, almost a hundred thousand for revenue, and, uh, expenses a hundred and forty thousand, at a sixty-nine percent cost recovery.
Okay.
And that's just the Field House. There's separate for Field House, and then athletics is outdoors, that's kind of how we divide it.
Okay.
And the, the national average for recreational facilities for the public is about thirty-two percent. So, that's the national average. I mean, it varies by community and different things, but.
Right.
You know, something else to remember about the Field House is it wasn't set up to have basically memberships, fitness stuff to help us offset our costs. So, for Travis to pull in sixty-nine percent cost recovery really its second full year, that's pretty good.
Absolutely, and then I think that the, the other half of that question too, is as we've been looking at like our deferred maintenance on so many of our parks, what, I mean, I know it's a new facility, but how are we putting money back to deal with the eventual HVACs or new roof or, or whatever that looks like? Do we have like a sinking fund for the Field House at this point?
No.
No. I mean, really what we're doing is Troy and his staff are trying to stay proactive on the maintenance and the cleaning of the facility so that we don't, so that we can prolong the life of what we have. And, and Troy and his staff did an excellent job with the maintenance of the facility. You know, and, and park staff as far as helping Travis, you know, flip, flip the facility. Because Travis and his staff couldn't do it alone. I mean, it takes, what, three hours to take the turf up, Travis?
Clean the turf, yes. Sit down, three hours, with twenty-some people.
There's a lot of work going in to make, you know, if we have soccer on a, in the north gym on a Friday night, and then we have to get it all done, you know, for, for Sunday, I mean, it literally takes three hours to, to change it out.
And how many folks does it take in three hours?
As many as we can get. You said twenty?
You need twenty-some people to flip that in a couple hours.
And that may be a topic worth, uh, investing, because eventually person needs to be replaced and stuff. Just, we can come back, it is quarter of four. And, uh, I see some faces that we don't usually see, so I'm hoping you brought questions, comment. This, this is open mic at the club. Any, no one, it doesn't have to be about what we were talking about or. Or you can talk about what we've been talking about, it really doesn't matter. All right, we'll just continue to talk until five, but, I mean, you, you have more questions?
Oh, no, 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 I'm good, I'm good. You looked at me about, if we can continue to talk, I was like, I got, I got nothing here.
But that, you know, that is a great topic, because we know there are some things that.